Hi John, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Yep, I was on, I had my sound off apparently.
Yes, when I went to full screen, it put me back on mute and took the video away.
Oh, how are you doing over there?
We're doing well, counting the days.
Oh, good. Have you found, have you found a place yet over this way?
No, and not from lack of trying.
I know, it's an odd market right now.
It is a hot market.
Yeah. Well, you'll find some.
Both rejected.
Well, I'm just hoping none of my children find me during this. Hi Sarah, hi Megan.
Hey.
Hey guys, hey John.
John, good to see you.
Good to be here, exciting reason to be here.
Absolutely.
Very exciting, yeah, I'm happy about this.
Your resume certainly looks impressive.
Sarah Fox, where are you? It's a different, uh, different background. Is that a virtual background?
I would paint the molding in the virtual background. It's Grace's bedroom. There's people all over the house right now, so I didn't have, I literally said to Matt at one point, I, I thought about going on the front lawn and sitting in the Adirondack chair. I didn't even know where to go today.
I did a meeting out in my yard today.
I really thought about it, other than my street's so busy with walkers and runners, I thought it would get distracting with the noise.
Yeah, I have a house full of giggles right now, hopefully you guys can't hear them.
Well, that's better than a house full of tears. Your kids are doing better than mine tonight.
Only because we've been with ice cream.
Well, I think these new meetings are gonna get harder now that it's light later, at least in my family, because I used to be able to trick them into going to bed earlier, but now, it's, yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to be home.
Yeah. I know Cecilia joined us for part of the budget meeting yesterday.
She's so big!
I know, but she's two, she just turned two.
I can't believe it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wild.
Alright, I just have to find a pen, I'll be back, mine just stopped.
John, I have five kids, so there's always someone somewhere.
Laughter and tears both, I'm sure.
Yeah.
We announced our graduation plan, and I'm not sure why it has gone so sideways, because it's what 90% of schools are doing, but the island families are just devastated.
Oh.
There's a lot of strong feelings here.
We're bringing them in, and having them walk across the stage and film it, and then go outside and get their yearbooks and their QMOT files, and get a professional photograph done in their cap and gown with their families. Very similar to what Bill was telling me, you're doing a Marblehead. I know Hudson, what I've heard they're doing in other districts, but it just wasn't well received.
Yeah.
There's so many feelings, it's such, it's so loaded and so difficult.
Sarah, you froze, I didn't hear most of that.
Oh, sorry, I just said, it's, it's, there's so many feelings around it, and it's just also loaded, that it's just really tough.
Right.
I feel worse for the seniors than even some of the college kids, just because, you know, they're, they're might not get a freshman year of college either. Can you imagine getting through to this point and finding out you're gonna spend your freshman year with your parents again? That would, that would be a hard pill to swallow.
Those poor parents.
This needs to be over way before my kids, it's time for them to leave, because I'm already fearful of that moment. So I just got back about an hour ago from getting my propane tank from yesterday.
Hi Nan, welcome.
Hi Nan.
Hi Nan, very nice to meet you.
I'm gonna go quickly kick my kid off the Xbox and maybe bag less, I'll be right back.
Good luck.
Thanks, I'll meet it.
So Nan, this is an entirely new age interview?
Especially without, like, haircuts or... Oh my goodness.
The good news is we're all in the same boat.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I'm, I'm almost looking like my high school graduation photo in another couple weeks. Thirty, thirty-five years ago, so.
You need to copy that photo.
That's what everybody says, I need to, need to find one of those.
Before and after.
I actually started giving my son and husband haircuts, it's all good if they don't turn around and you don't see the back.
Yeah, I mean, we've come full circle, Nan, I remember replying for a job twenty years ago by mail, with an envelope and a stamp, and it wasn't an email submittal, and you needed to wait for somebody to call you back.
Oh my gosh.
Then all the interviews were in person, and then it was, of course, you can submit your applications electronically, and here we are today with Zoom, with Zoom meetings, it's a, it's a big change.
Yeah, it is, it is. There's some pros, but there, you know, it's, they're all getting old now, everybody wants their life back.
Yes. You know, so.
Hi John.
Hi John.
And John's with us, John Bucky.
Yes, both Johns are with us.
I was confused momentarily when the "Hi John" started, I thought, well, I've been here, why are they saying hello?
Hi John Moretti.
I wouldn't have asked me today to say hello a second time and forget that I'd done it first. It's one of those days.
I thought it was Thursday until about two hours ago when someone corrected me.
It's the same, Sarah.
It is, it's toxic every day.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I thought it was Tuesday because we had Monday off, so, I don't know.
I've made a lot of mistakes in my schedule today.
Woo woo.
Yep, I frantically FaceTimed a client this afternoon, only to find out that she was supposed to be tomorrow, and I thought I was fifteen minutes late, but turns out I was really ahead of time.
Even late, Sarah.
Should we start, or are there a lot of people in the waiting room still?
I know, I think we should start, I think it's a couple minutes after seven, and I haven't had anybody come in in the last minute or two, so we can officially call to order at 7:02. And Bill, I will turn it over to you to make an introduction.
Thank you Sarah, good evening everyone. Well, this certainly is a special meeting, and I'm very pleased that we're able to be here tonight for the school committee to meet Nan Murphy. A number of you have already engaged in conversation, so I say let's just get to, you know, item number three on the agenda. I just want to quickly review with you the process for this search. First outlined to the committee a few months ago prior to school closure, a search advisory committee was established, and I really want to recognize the members of the search advisory committee. The members included, from the school committee, Jim Schaafner, Megan Taylor, members of the administrative team, Michelle Cresta, Mac Fox, and Brian Ota, staff members, Robin Fines, Eric Fargo, and Jonathan Heller, and two parents, Melissa Kapilich and Paul Baker, and our incoming superintendent, John Bucky. The members of that committee spent many, many hours reviewing and over forty application packets, met a couple of times to talk about the candidates and who, who met our qualifications for interviews. A number of candidates were interviewed over a course of approximately a week's time. The search advisory committee, per the charge, per their charge, then recommended a slate of candidates to move further on in the process, and that's where Dr. Bucky and I became involved in getting down, so to speak, to the nitty gritty. We, we worked closely together in completing the vetting process of those individuals that were identified for further consideration. This vetting process consisted of a deep dive into their credentials and experience. It includes speaking with a wide range of references, individually re-interviewing two of those at that group that eventually became finalists, and finally having the opportunity to observe the finalists, interact with our staff, and then had an opportunity to review the feedback from our staff. So, we have with us tonight the, to coin a television show, The Lone Survivor. And, and we're very pleased, I'm very pleased to introduce to you Nan Murphy. Tonight is, is going to turn out to be perhaps a little more informal than previously thought, and I think that's a very, very good thing. So, we would, our plan tonight, or my plan tonight, is to have Nan start by introducing herself. She's going to tell you a little bit about herself, her experience, her background, and why she would like to come to Marblehead. It will then, I'll then turn it back to you, Sarah, for some interaction, perhaps some questions that you have of Nan, and then our plan hopefully is that we will wrap the meeting up with a formal recommendation for appointment. So Nan, again, welcome, you've done a great job through our process. Both John and I are very pleased that you're here at this point, and I'll let you start it off.
Alright, well, thank you so much, I am thrilled to be here and meeting everybody. I have thoroughly enjoyed the process, it's been, I feel like I've been completely vetted by your team, so although it's, it's, it's hard on a candidate, I value and understand the process and appreciate how deep all of the thinking and questioning went, because you certainly want to try to get the best fit for your community. So I'm thrilled to be here. I am a lifelong educator, I spent sixteen years in the classroom. I loved teaching, I taught elementary school, first, third, and fourth grade. I never really intended to become a school leader, it wasn't until around my tenth year of teaching that I really started to understand the impact that district leaders, curriculum leaders, school leaders had on my teaching and the overall feel of a school community. So I was inspired to try to create that, went on, was very lucky to land in Lowell, Massachusetts. I was an assistant principal and of an elementary school, and then I assumed the principalship after a year and a half. The, at that time, the state came back with some accountability data, it was in a new format, and much to our surprise, the school that I was newly assuming responsibility for was, in fact, the lowest performing elementary school out of all fourteen elementary schools in Lowell. So we had our work cut out for us, we were designated a high needs level three, and at that time, the state was assuming responsibility for level four schools, so we were very close to that point. But by developing a strong shared leadership model, a strong team approach, the teachers and the administrative staff worked together, hands joined. We concentrated on a couple of really important instructional shifts in teaching, and also really tightly aligned some curricular practices. And happy to say that after four years, at the time our kindergarteners left us as fourth graders, their MCAS data designated us a level one school. And the commissioner of education came out with a team, interviewed the faculty, and my administrative group, and to try to understand how to help other districts build this kind of capacity. At that point, the superintendent of schools created a position for me at the district level. I became the director of accountability and school improvement, working with primarily the underperforming schools, about seven of them in Lowell, as well as professionally developing a hundred leaders. So I did all the professional development for principals, assistant principals, directors, and assistant superintendents. After two years in that role, I became very close and colleagues with my colleagues at the state level, who were in Lowell supporting five particular schools, and they afforded me the opportunity to come to work for them at the Department of Education, which is where I am now. And my role at this point is I go into districts that are underperforming, and I work with the leadership teams, assistant superintendents, superintendents, principals, and teachers, and help them devise plans for sustainable improvement. Loved that job, continue to enjoy the people I work with, but miss being part of a district. I had a feeling that would happen to me, and it did. I miss being a part of the overall professional development in a district, building relationships with teachers and principals, and working with a team at the, at the district level. So, I knew I wanted to get back into that work, and when I saw the Marblehead position, everything about it seemed to me like the stars were aligned. What I could learn about the superintendent-elect was fantastic, seemed like great collaborator, certainly proved that to me as, throughout the interview process, an opportunity to continue some great work that's been happening around curriculum and instruction, working alongside the administrative team, developing a strategic plan, which is expiring this year, so. So, and, and working with a demographic that, the challenge is really about, how do you move high achievement? How do you continue to move kids forward when they, when they're, when there's good data? Because, you know, we, we always want kids moving beyond what they're currently doing, regardless of where they fall. So, just different kind of challenge, so I'm, I'm honored, I feel like it's a privilege to be here, and to be considered at this level and that in your community is, is just been a real thrill for me, so, thank you for that. Maybe y'all have some questions or something I could further go into for you?
Great, thank you so much Nan. It was, as, you know, as someone who wasn't part of the, of the previous process, it was really great to hear you speak and put a lot of the things in your resume into your own words, so, nice to start to get to know you. So, I will open it up to the committee, I've, I've got a question, but I will let others start, if, if anybody wants to do that.
Well, I'll, I'll start if no one else is, I mean, I had the privilege, obviously, of being part of the initial interview team, so, you know, I've already spoken to Nan a few times, but Nan, I thought I'd ask you the same question I asked you in the interview. I think, I think it's one that would be useful to the committee. I am gonna switch it up a little bit, though, so, when I ask it if you could apply what you've learned about our district through this interview process, that would be great, okay?
Sure.
The question is, if you could please explain your philosophy of education, and how you will apply that to your day-to-day work here in Marblehead?
Okay, great, so, I, I, I believe I answered it, I'll, I'll answer it similarly than, that I did in the interview. I, I really, truly at the heart and soul of my philosophy around education, in particular, teaching and learning, is that all students can, and with the correct amount of time and support, students can meet and exceed expectations. So, there, students come with all different kinds of backgrounds and experiences. They have, some, some are literate and ready to go in kindergarten, other need more foundational skills to get off to a strong start. My belief is that if we as adults can do a good thorough job of determining what our students in front of us need, and then adjust and shift the curriculum and scaffold for students, that they will get there. So, that doesn't, it doesn't matter if you're talking about a kindergarten student or a junior in high school. It's all about understanding their instructional level, trying to find materials that will engage them, so not necessarily the traditional materials, as we look into the vast support since, variety of teaching tools that we have. If we are aggressively pursuing ways to engage kids and providing them the support and the instructional leveled material, they will, they will get there. And I saw it, I lived it at the McCullough School when students who were not speaking English were able to exceed our expectations when we provided the right supports. So, I'm, I'm confident that, that that is a belief that I will take regardless of the district that I serve in, that, that I really want for each child to meet their own individual level of success. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you Nan. Anybody else want to ask a question? Otherwise, I can ask mine.
I'm, I'm happy to go next.
Okay, go ahead Sarah.
Nan, my question was, how do you see the role, if you see it any differently now, but do you, how do you see the role of assistant superintendent, different now, given the situation we're in and what we'll be bringing kids back to school with? And would you say your priorities in this new role would be different?
I think the priorities will most certainly be different than a typical beginning of a school year for all administrators and principals and teachers as well. The, the primary focus will be around re-entry, whatever that looks like, whether it's a, a variation of a school day, whether it continues as remote learning. It's really, I would see my role as the assistant superintendent listening and talking to what's going well with remote learning, what are some concerns staff are having? Do they have the materials they need? And really seeking the guidance of the superintendent and the vision that he brings to the work. And then, once I get an understanding, kind of operationalizing what his vision is, and helping to communicate with the community, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the kids, help get the message out, once that's been determined. So, really, the, the re-entry piece is around the social emotional health and wellbeing of kids, getting them back into a structured setting, supporting the adults in what they're feeling they need professionally. Looking at curriculum, we're gonna have to take steps back from our traditional fall curriculum, where there are going, most likely gonna be some achievement pieces missing that we might need to backfill in the fall. So kind of looking at different reassessment sources, what will give us that information? And how do we help kind of bring all of that together for a smooth fall and hopefully winter?
Great, thank you, and that actually is a perfect setup for the question that I had wanted to ask. Given everything we know going on for kids and adults, and, you know, particularly our teachers, of course, can you talk about how you see social emotional issues interface with curriculum? Or with children's ability to access the curriculum?
So, I, I think some of our, our students that we typically talk about being disengaged, or we have attendance issues around, or defiancey around, sometimes when you talk to the kids, they're very open and transparent around instruction, and what is missing in their classroom settings to engage them. So, I, I think there's also vocal data that is currently available to Marblehead administrative leaders, that, that is data taken from the eighth grade, the fifth grade, and I believe the tenth grade students after their science MCAS are asked about, how do they feel about school, and how do they feel about the curriculum, and are they challenged? And do they feel like their teachers care about them? Are they, can feel like they have good friends? Do they feel vulnerable to bullying? So, I think looking at that vocal data and trying to determine how students feel, and how, what's their perception around teaching and school safety and resources to support them? They ask about, do you know where you need to go if you need help with an emotional issue? So, looking at that data can be very helpful too, on a, on an overarching level, but also... So looking at that data can be very helpful too on an overarching level, but also I think advisories are a great opportunity for teachers to make connections in the middle school and high school and have those kind of conversations with kids about their needs and you know, what's working in the classroom setting and what can we do better as teachers?
Great, thank you. I especially appreciate sort of, it comes through that you have your start in the lower grades and I think that to me is unique and a real asset because it really puts you at that starting level and understanding the little kids and then you know, being able to broaden that as they are actually then able to discuss things and talk about what they, how they're feeling and what they think about school and how they're able to function within a school day. So that's great, thanks. Anybody else?
I had a question, Sarah, but I actually was going to go last just because I've had a chance to talk to Nan a couple of times. I don't know if David has a question?
David, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. Nan, welcome to Marblehead. This is really exciting and as you probably know, we've gone through a transition period of bringing in interim superintendent Bill McCullough and John Moretti. And you used the words, "the stars were aligned" when you saw this position. And I think if you could talk just a little bit more about that, I mean, we brought Michelle Cresta in as our business manager and now we have Dr. Bucky as our superintendent and the missing link is to have an assistant superintendent. So it's a little bit different. I mean, you're coming into a hype of what I think is a high-performing district and we've carried that forward. You have an awesome supporting staff at the high school level and all of the principals and the administrative staff. But the administrative level is going to essentially be all new. So just talk about that a little bit and what you might bring to the team.
So to be able to bring to the administration, the school leaders, I think my two years in providing professional development in Lowell has certainly been an asset. So I think I understand, and also my 11 years as a school leader myself, I understand the demands around teacher evaluation and really trying to get teacher feedback right and try to do it in a way that you're growing your professional community and not harming it through comments that you make and through the culture that you build in a school. So I think I have some of those experiences, both personally and as a professional development provider. I also know instruction. I know that's what I do right now. I'm in Chelsea High School, I'm in other high schools and we do instructional rounds and we'll go in, we'll look at instruction, I'll look at instruction with a principal or a small team of chairs and we'll step out into the hall and we'll debrief the instruction and we talk about you know, what was missing, what were some great things to make sure you come full circle back with the teacher. So I think I have a really strong lens for instruction. And I also believe that good instruction looks the same in the elementary school that it does in the high school, that you are engaging kids, that kids are with, you know, there's a balance between paper and pencil and exploratory curriculum. So I have some of that kind of background to support principals with. I also have from Lowell, a vast experience with crisis and what, you know, when a school leader is struggling with, you know, what to do next with a particular student, sometimes I would get that call and we would talk it through together and we would be able to really always try to stay focused on what's best for the kids, the child involved, the family involved. So I think I can kind of balance that out as well with staff.
Great, thanks. Well, I think you know, you're coming in, Brad, who was the previous assistant superintendent, he used to really like to do lunch duty, for instance, at the Village. And he talked about that, about how that was really good for him to be engaged with the students outside of all of the curriculum work that he did. And you're right, I think that's what it's all about, you know, when it comes down to it, so.
I would schedule instructional rounds with the high school department heads on Loaded Baked Potato Day. So we would do it and then we'd go down into the cafeteria and talk with kids and so that's, yeah, that's a big part of my love of being back in a district is that I can make some of those connections and you know, come back to certain classrooms and follow up with teachers on a more consistent basis.
Yep, that's great, thanks.
Thanks, Nan. Jen, did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah, appreciate it. Nan, welcome back. I'm going to switch gears just a little bit and you talked about in your initial interview, what you also have on your resume, which is culturally proficient leading and teaching. And you've given some great examples, I guess, I was going to say anecdotes, but examples of how you've done that. I wonder if you could share that tonight with the rest of the committee?
So the overall culture across education right now, particularly in Massachusetts, is around the focus of really making sure that our staff and all staff in education, not just teachers, but anybody who really has direct interaction with parents and families and students, have some sort of an understanding of culturally proficient language and approaches. So there's a lot of, a lot of the schools that I'm working with is using the text by Zaretta Hammond, Cultural Proficiency in the Brain. And it talks about how our own personal experiences inform a lot of our decisions. So really trying to be aware of your implicit and explicit biases and it just doesn't mean race, it can mean around the way you talk about the special education programs, it can be around how you talk about students that are second language learners, it can be, it's the way you talk about students who have behavioral needs and need something different and different types of interventions. So it's a broad awareness of how our, how our own personal experiences inform some of our decisions and how sometimes we need to shake that up because they don't always guide us in the right direction. And the more aware we are of our biases, the better informed our decisions can be for kids. So that's been a great experience, teachers have really responded well. There's also a big, big part of that learning is around building relationships with students and getting to know them beyond, you know, the middle schools, teachers get them for such a minimal amount of time, there's so much curriculum to get through. So how do we build time for that community piece and for getting to know each other and understanding and building a relationship so when kids are struggling, they have an opportunity to share that with a trusted adult. So there's a lot to that, I'm kind of summarizing and breezing over it, I'm sure people would be saying, "I'm missing a lot of important components which are missing," but that's the overall approach that we're trying to extend out into the community. I've done some work around white fragility and how our, how our experiences as white middle-class educators can sometimes inhibit us when we're working with families that don't necessarily understand some of the acronyms we're using, we're speaking too fast for families that speak second language, second languages. So just trying to be more aware of our overall approach in different settings and with all different, all the different community members that make up our school families.
Thank you, thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Nan. Committee, any other questions?
I'm good for now.
All right, great, thank you so much, Nan. Fantastic, just, it's really great to hear you speak on those levels.
Great.
Bill, did you have any, anything else to say?
So, yes, Nan, thank you very much for being here tonight. And Sarah, in the committee, do you, we're moving on, I hope, to agenda item three, a vote on the appointment? Would you like Nan to stick around or?
I don't have a problem with that at all.
I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
Great. Yeah, absolutely.
Nan, are you sure you want to?
Does Nan want to stick around for that?
Do you agree to the suggestion or do we just make the motion?
So I'd like to say a few more words before you have a motion, Sarah, if that's okay?
Please.
You know me, I like to jump right in.
It's all right, Sarah, we'll get to you. So the first thing is, I did want to say that, you know, I haven't, you haven't heard me brag about this at all during the year, but it finally came out, yes, there is a school named after me in Lowell. Just a little joke. Okay. Now, very seriously, I do want to place one more shout out, one more thanks again to the search advisory committee for their, for providing excellent guidance and direction in ultimately getting us to where we are tonight. So again, thank you for your dedication, your hard work. It's not an easy task to be on one of those committees and this committee worked really well together. So thank you. And I also want to thank Dr. Bucky for his involvement all the way through this process. This is a rare opportunity for an incoming superintendent to be closely involved in a process where a brand-new assistant superintendent will be coming in and working directly with him. And so you know, that was something from the very beginning we were committed to and I think it worked out very well. And so thanks, John, for being, for you taking the time and the effort to be involved in the process. We wouldn't be where we are if that was not the case.
Well, my pleasure. I was very happy to be part of the process, but even happier that Nan is emerging as the assistant superintendent of Marblehead. We're very excited.
Thank you.
Awesome. Why don't we make it official? I do want to, I'm actually going to, if you don't mind, read just a little bit from the memo that I forwarded to school committee members earlier today. "I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Nan Murphy to be the next assistant superintendent of the Marblehead Public Schools." As you know, John and I did work closely together once the search advisory committee furthered, provided us with a slate of candidates to move further. As we progressed through this process, we learned about Nan's leadership style as a collaborative team player who is an excellent communicator, she's personable, approachable, and a leader who models openness, fairness, and dedication to students, staff, and parents. She has the track record of building strong positive relationships and developing a culture of accountability while being a highly respected leader. She's described by both colleagues and supervisors as clear, focused, and strategic. She's further described as being dedicated and tireless, being a dedicated and tireless advocate of all students, demonstrates exceptional leadership skills, and is able to analyze and synthesize data while sharing it in meaningful ways. Now that is a very excellent skill set to have. Both Dr. Bucky and I believe that Nan Murphy is the best choice to fill this vitally important role for the Marblehead Public Schools. So thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you, Bill. So I would like to ask for a motion that the Marblehead School Committee appoint Ms. Nan Murphy as assistant superintendent of schools, subject to successful contract negotiation.
So moved.
Sarah Fox, Sarah Fox, move. And Megan.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that?
You're breaking up a little bit, Sarah, but I'd like to echo the comments of the superintendent and say thanks to the people that worked on the committee and also to, you know, John Bucky and Bill for working together collaboratively. It is a unique situation to have this opportunity and I'm real excited that everybody's been involved and everybody's been engaged and it's going to be a great year next year. So I'm excited to move forward with the vote.
Thanks, David.
Can I just say something, Sarah?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure getting to know you, you know, this is the third time now, I think that we've had some interaction, so it's really been great getting to know you a little bit virtually even and hearing about your experience. I'm really, really excited to have you fill this position. I think you're going to complement the rest of the team and Dr. Bucky specifically with your experience. So I'm excited, thank you for being here, thank you for sharing, you know, your background and your resume with us and let's make it happen.
Great.
Let's move the vote.
All right, anybody else? Because I agree with what's been said and I'm just, I'm thrilled that we've got such an amazing candidate and just really excited. Anybody have anything else to add?
Let's vote.
Let's do it.
So we'll roll call, Sarah Gold, yes?
Where have you been all year?
What'd you say?
No. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Sarah Gold, yes, Jen Schaffner.
I'm sorry, did you call me? Yes, that's me, yes.
All right, Megan Taylor.
Sorry, went out there.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox.
I said yes if you didn't hear me.
Thanks, Sarah Fox.
Yes.
All right, and David Harris.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Nan. Welcome to Marblehead.
Thank you, Bill.
Welcome aboard, Nan.
Thank you so much, everyone, I'm very, very excited.
So are we.
Nan, I know you can't see me, but I just wanted to welcome you as well, I'm just over here doing minutes. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nan, I want to take the opportunity to applaud you on how well you handle, I mean, this, I was nervous, this has been my first Zoom interview and this has felt very, very natural, it flowed wonderfully. If working with you in person is as much of a joy as this has been, I am very excited to meet you in person.
Thank you, thank you. I'm really excited, the more I got to know John and the team, I just, I knew this was going to be a good place for me. So thank you for all of your warm thoughts and I'm excited for July 1st. I usually don't wish away May and June, but I'm very excited for July 1st.
Don't blame you.
You're welcome. I think a lot of us are wishing away May and June this year.
That's true.
And Bill, I have it duly noted that you'd like to be entered into the finalist category the finalist category for the school name process.
Absolutely not.
I'd vote for that.
Nan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nan.
Congratulations. And we will be in touch very shortly.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, Nan, congratulations.
Bye. Thanks, Nan.
Well, with that, that brings us to.
Thank you very much to the school committee.
Thank you, Bill, and, and thank you, John. I'm really glad that, that we've got one more of our boxes checked off. And it's exciting to see John start to move into his role and, and, and take part in this. So, all right.
Pleasure to be here.
If there is not anything else, then I will adjourn us at 7:42. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thanks.